I was really delighted just to be having this event here tonight. When I first, when Trailers first sort of designed it, it was sort of an idea on the back of the napkin, so we had planned for this very large community space and a lot of my investors said it's sort of nuts to have this much space. You can't get a retail store without product, right? You should be selling things in a retail store, but we really wanted this to be a place for community, for lively discussion, for ideas to be exchanged, and for important, meaningful topics to be discussed. And so, just out of curiosity, this is our very first political forum, and we're happy to be here to host Trailers in this way and many others in that regard. We're happy to have you here tonight. Thanks for coming out.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot, Jason. It really is great to be here and thanks for having us and opening up your space so generously. And to everybody who's here, if you haven't already, you know, looked around the store, I encourage you to do so. It really is a great resource for green supplies for your home and business. And thanks to all of the candidates who are here tonight to participate in this forum. We realize that there have been a lot of forums and a lot of questionnaires and that your time is getting a little pressed, so really, thank you for taking the time. My name is Kayla White. I work at Public Citizen and I'm also on the board of Solar Austin. Both are nonprofits here in Austin and almost other things. I do a lot of work on solar energy in the city, especially in relation to Austin Energy. So, the topics that we'll be discussing tonight are close to my work and to my interests. In November, we are going to be electing our first city council from city single-member districts. It's a big change for Austin. And the purpose of this forum is to allow all of you in the audience to determine what the different positions are on these important issues related to Austin Energy, that all of the different components have. So, thank you for being here. Thank you for paying attention. The reason that we have taken a whole forum to focus on Austin Energy, you might think, well, it's just another city department, but it's much more than that. It's Austin's most valuable asset. It's valued at $3.8 billion and it runs all sorts of city services in Austin. This includes firefighters, EMS, libraries, parks, all the things that we need and we care about in Austin. About 37% of Austin's general revenue budget comes from Austin Energy Transfer. So, it's a very important source of revenue in the city and it's something that we get because we have our own public way, own utility. And decisions made about Austin Energy, in addition to impacting our budget and our services, also have really important implications for climate change, air quality, water use, and of course affordability. And for all of those reasons, that's why we're focusing tonight on Austin Energy as a whole. And there's a whole group of nonprofits that has come together to host this forum. Public Citizen, Sea Coalition, Sierra Club, Solar Austin, Texas Rose, Clean Water Action, Austin Climate Action Network, Texas drought project, First Unitarian Universalist, Green Sanctuary Ministry, and the Wildflower Unitarian Universalist Church. All right. So, to go over a few ground rules before we get started, just to keep things flowing. Candidates will have one minute each for opening statements and one minute at the end for closing statements as well. And the time allotted for each question will be announced as I read the question. And also, the cards that Dave Cortez will be passing out to each of the candidates as I read the question. Who's getting time? Jen's going to be keeping time in the back. And do you want to hold up your cards so we can see what's going on? Yeah, so he's going to hold up cards to kind of show a countdown of the times to you all as you're answering the question. Because we have a bunch of questions and there's a bunch of candidates, please respect the timekeeper and when that zero card goes up, just stop talking. You'll get another chance. There's plenty of questions, so you can finish your thought next time if you need to. Yes, so we are going to be starting with Eliza May for the opening statements and then we will continue down the line here. And we will be then alternating between the two districts for the opportunity to kind of go first as a district and we'll also be rotating within the districts, so everybody will get a good chance to go first. And if you're not confused by the end, then wow. All right. So, I think that's about it. So, let's get started with the opening statements and you might need to turn that light off.
Hello.
Hello.
All right. Good evening, everyone. My name is Eliza May. I've got to watch this tone here. The voice is kind of low. I'm excited to be here, needless to say. I live, I've been in Austin since 1976 and I've lived in South and Southwest Austin during this time. I'm currently the Director of Mission Services. And in this job, I run grants. I'm basically the Rights Manager for a five-county area as it comes to healthcare, the healthcare grants for breast cancer services. In addition to that, I have served the state in the state Executive Director capacity as well as our local area as a Executive President of the Greater Austin Civic Chamber of Commerce. I bring a wealth of experience and a depth of community engagement over the last 36 years, 38 years really, that I've been here. And I look forward to continuing my service, whether it's in the seat of your council room or if I'm in the seat of a active citizen. Thank you.
Good evening, I'm here, I'm a candidate for city council District 8. I want to thank all the organizations coming together this evening to develop a table of eight, only imagine how grateful we are that we feel all collaborating on one another. Much appreciated. But I have been in Austin since 1984 when my dad came first retired, early spending back to Texas, went to Quack High School here in South Austin, and St. Louis University. Started my first position at Motorola. Currently, I am the owner of Snap Management Group, a process improvement and change management company. We provide services to government entities, including school districts, and we've done some efficiency work at Austin Energy. I worked at IBM, I also worked for the General Services Commission. I have money with a vision of one team, one dream, and one city. Hopefully throughout the year, I'll be able to tie some of that into some questioning. I am a firm believer that words have meaning. I have three daughters, one at ANE, one at Baylor, and my daughter is an attorney in small, and my wife is an education attorney. So, I'm looking forward to being a voice for you and for our community. Thank you so much for attending this evening.
Good evening. I'm Megan Bryan. I'm also running as a council candidate for District 8. We were told before to make sure you all signed in, so I'm just going to make sure you all sign in. I came about Austin in a hard way, I scored a raise here. I was here in 1969. I didn't do math to figure out how old I am, but I have heard of her thing yet. I'm a transportation engineer with over 20 years of experience. During my time as an engineer, I have developed, implemented, and managed multimillion-dollar budgets. So, I'm uniquely familiar with the budgeting process. I've also served on many boards, such as Animal Trustee of Austin, the Ronald McDonald House of Care use of Central Texas. And I've been honored as an Arrow of the Beast Fellow, a leader of the under 40 finalists, and a leadership Austin participant. So, I am also uniquely familiar with developing collaborative partnerships that can make things move forward. And through that, I look forward to working with each and every one of you on making Austin more green energy savvy, so to speak. So, thank you.
Hello, my name's Adam Scruggs. I'm running in District 8. I've lived in Austin 23 years and in Southwest Austin for 13 years. I came here in the early 90s as a reporter with KOBJAM covering city council back when the SOS initiative was enacted, so a very important time. I have three kids and local schools. I was a member of my homeowners association board and helped transition that from developer to homeowner control, which was a very significant move in our part of the world. I've also worked to build schools in Southwest Austin to relieve overcrowding and worked on a number of community and other projects throughout town. I'm very glad to be here. Thanks for hosting this debate tonight. Climate change is the ultimate issue that we face. I believe it's at the center of all the environmental issues that we face, but also Austin Energy is at the center of all the financial issues that we face. So, we're across it. Thanks.
All right. That's better. I'm David Lloyd. I'm running here District 5. I moved to Austin when I was 13. I grew up in Barton Hills, went to Austin High School, went to UT Austin, went to law school last year, and came back right after that. And I practiced law, worked as a business editor, worked in the insurance business. And now, I've been a practicing attorney and business consultant, working with tech startup, which has been a lot of fun. It's great, very Austin-based, business-based, phone app. And I've worked on a lot of community and nonprofit groups. That's been a really great experience. It's got to be a ton of community issues. I've also done Leadership Austin Essential in the emergency program. I'm truly excited why I'm here, to represent. It's great for my home, my home district. My parents still live in Barton Hills. I live in Zoker and I hope that I can represent the city council and also kind of bridge the gap between our older, you know, the older longtime residents and the concerns of young professionals that are up and coming in the community.
Yes, good evening. This is on. Okay. I'm Dave Seneca. I'm also running the District 5. I've been in District 5 for most of the 30 years I've been in Austin. District 5, I believe, has an awful lot of potential. We have the Zoker neighborhood, I mean, Crete, all of South Lamar and then Chaka Road, and a large portion of South Austin. I think these neighborhoods are a big part of the culture of Austin and we, as a group, have a lot to contribute. I've been active in Austin the whole time I've been here. I volunteered at multiple venues, and I think at the Sierra Club obviously for about 20 years. I'm a member of about 10, one. I think it gives an opportunity to focus on the potential that they have been missed in the past. I'm committed to making that happen, and that's why. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Anne Kitchen and I am running the District 5. And thank you all for being here and thank you so much for putting this on. It's really good to be on here talking about energy issues. So, I am running to offer my experience, I'm running to offer my experience to listen to and to fight for South Austin as well as the city as a whole. You know, at a time when nine out of 10, nine out of 10 council members will be new and all at the same time, I can offer the experience to be very well prepared to hit the ground running. I can offer experience to, experience representing South Austin. I've lived in the district for over 20 years and as a state representative, I represented much of South Austin. I can also offer my experience in legal, my legal, my business, and my community experience. I'm a former Assistant Attorney General. I've been very involved in the community and in the environment. I'm very proud to say that I was on the Steering Committee for SOS and so I'm running to offer that experience to all of you. Thank you so much.
My name's Dan Buda. Thank you for having us tonight. I am a small business owner in South Austin. My previous experience includes six years in the State Capitol. Over the last four legislative sessions, working both for the former Senator Mario Daigus from earlier flooding, worked to prepare these issues. And then later, as Chief of Staff to Senator Wendy Davis, where among the daily duties of managing the staff, managing the offices, and the legislative agenda, I was able to work on a number of different policy issues, public education, transportation-related, but also environmental issues as well. Probably only get more into that if we continue the conversation here, but a lot of that had to do with natural gas fracking, natural gas drilling, trying to provide some better safety, air quality issues, especially in the DFW area where there's so much asthma-prone tension from this drilling itself. I really look to bring the experience of having served four sessions in the Capitol to South Austin and representing people up here in City of Austin.
Hello, I'm Jason Denny. I'm a candidate for District 5. I currently live in the most southern part of the district, south of Slaughter. I've got a wife and two kids. They're both in preschool and I currently work for the Texas Journal Land Office. Served there as a customer service representative for the Texas Veterans Land Board, serving the veterans of the state of Texas. I moved to Austin in 2004 after I had a time in the Marine Corps and called Austin Home since then. And I've lived in South Austin since 2001. And I'm hoping that, you know, the conversation that we have tonight on clean energy, that it goes two ways, just in the point to where having a voice in South Austin and representing the citizens, that's what I plan on bringing, the transparency and accountability that we don't have currently on the city council. And I look forward to talking with everyone tonight. Thank you.
And everyone here tonight, I think, because you know that this is an exciting time, or the first time in 60 years we'll have a chance to have a voice on city council. We in South Austin haven't had anybody in South Austin represent us in the time that I've been here, and that's been 19 years. I had a 26-year career in the Air Force. I chose where I wanted to live and came to Austin as the most beautiful city in Texas. I'd like to keep it that way. What I did discover early on, however, is that there were folks downtown that were calling all the decisions about your taxes, about your energy, about your utility bills, about transportation, and we ought to have that choice to have our own representative, have our own voice up there. In the 26 years I was in the Air Force, I had leadership and management positions in very large organizations to include working at a national headquarters, programming all fighter training for the United States with a budget of $1.1 billion. I also served three years at the US Embassy in Germany in command of fighter units. I have an MBA and I think this, being the 11th largest city in the United States, ought to be run like a big business.
All right, thank you all for those opening statements. Very exciting. I will just echo that I'm really excited that we're going to have some representation in South Austin. I live over in New Burton Springs. It's my favorite place and I believe these two districts share the Austin treasure. So, we're going to start with the questions. Question one is going to be a one-minute question, so keep your answers to a minute. What is your position in city council maintaining full responsibility for governance of Austin Energy, transferring authority to an independent board for privatizing the utility?
All right, thank you very much. My position on the Austin Energy is that absolutely, under no circumstances should we privatize. We have a tremendous asset by owning the electric utility. I'm looking at stockholders right now. So, we want to maintain that. It does give an awful lot of money to the city, helps us, it is an investment, it does pay off very well. If we were to privatize it, that means that we would no longer, there would no longer be a community to our utility. We would be a market because we'd be controlled from outside. I'm also, I don't like the transfer to a board, that's another layer. I kind of prefer to have the electric utility be directly responsible to the council. I think that we're smart enough to understand that they're going to be telling us what we want and plus, we're direct now, the 10, one, direct to the people. So, now you don't have an extra layer going from your ideas to the electric utility. Thank you very much.
The city council needs to maintain full responsibility for governance. There's no backing off of that. It's necessary for accountability. The role of the city council is to oversee, is to set policy, set policy direction, and then oversee how it's done. So, that can't be done if the city council puts a layer between itself and the utility. So, the utility is a public asset. It's the city's responsibility to protect that public asset and that's part of the role in setting the policy direction and overseeing the budget and overseeing how funds are expended, et cetera. So, I would strongly, I would not, I would not be in favor of anything that watered down the responsibility of city council overseeing the governance of Austin Energy.
Utility as we go forward. I spent several sessions in the Capitol working on electricity legislation, working to combat some of the problems seen across the state due to the electricity deregulation from 1999. There's probably no putting the genie back in the bottle there, but the, in my opinion, deregulation, deregulation of electricity in the state has been a disastrous disaster leading to increased prices, lack of accountability in our electric utilities. And if we took any steps towards privatizing Austin Energy, I think we could probably see the same issues there.
I too agree with the others as well. Just, you know, on a part to that is, it's an opportunity. I mean, we don't need to, you know, stop the revenue that we have that we're generating through Austin Energy. What needs to happen is the transparency and accountability on those relationships that we have as the opportunity to sit on that board and to listen to some of the questions or the ideas that come forward, but it's also utilizing the local organizations that we have that, for example, that are sponsoring this event tonight, is the opening of the dialogue and the communication with the residents because that's what we want. As living in South Austin and not having a voice, that's the opportunity that we have. And so, what the community wants is what we need to do on council and that's the direction that we need to turn for Austin Energy. Thank you.
We should take control of Austin Energy and Austin Water, people that matter. We should run like a co-op for you, the people, however. I don't agree that we should transfer as much money out of those two utilities as we are. The 9.1% they take from Austin Energy is too much. They're putting it into things that are unrelated to energy rather than reinvesting it into them. What the city council's role though is, you will have a council member and that'll be your voice and your say about how you feel about the rates and about the policy, the way we manage it, about the future philosophy and the direction that we're going with our path towards a cleaner and greener energy. But we've got to keep the source and the, we've got to keep energy affordable for the people also. I feel real responsible to you to do exactly that. So, I would advocate for a rollback to a lower rate than 9.1%. There's no commercial utility that charges you that much. And then, of course, whatever we do as a transfer rate becomes something that we can put back into our community, it just doesn't need to be as high as it is.
Yeah, under no circumstances should we privatize Austin Energy. The city of Austin, I think, the people of Austin have values and those values include placing affordability and sustainability. When you look at that, you look at conservation and you look at equity and equity includes looking at affordability issues. And so, with the city, looking at the city council, kind of like board of directors of a company that the public, and that is the city of Austin, owns, they can really shape the actions that Austin Energy takes and includes pursuit of clean tech, renewable energy, as well as working with homeowners to help them be more efficient with their homes, working with Austin Water, to be sure the water company uses less electricity in the movement of water resources. And also, from an economic development standpoint, you know, Austin would look like a clean tech hub and it's a great opportunity for some public-partner partnerships to work with clean tech industry, develop those technologies that will benefit us in the future.
Recognizing that city council's role is that Austin may be the only thing we also have, a strategic setting responsibility, of course, we hire the city manager. I haven't seen any privatization model that could cause me to believe that that would be a smart economic decision and nor do I think setting up an independent board would give the council or the city any greater efficiencies or greater management than what we have right now. But what I do think is important is that city council has a responsibility as a Austin may be the board to work with the city manager, make sure they have the right leadership team. And if you have the right leadership team with the right skill sets for running Austin Energy based on the strategic direction that we set, I think we can accomplish some of the renewable goals and other cost study measures that we might want to explore. I too find myself in that category that really want evaluating the level of transfers. I'm not sure that it's justifiable and I'm not sure that the dependency that the General City, General Fund has developed over the course of time is sustainable, particularly in cost of living variables and challenges that we're facing.
I'll hold the microphone. As with everybody else, yes, I do agree that the city council should remain, should maintain responsibility for Austin Energy. And Austin Energy has been a great asset for our community through both keeping it locally, the local utility, as well as providing funding for many teams within our communities through, for the community through the transfer. I think one thing we do have to keep in mind though is the amount of transfer. There has been some pushback from people outside of the city of Austin with respect to the transfer. And I think we just need to be prepared for that and be very transparent in where the transfers are going and when people fully understand the things in our community that we are funding for them. So, thank you.
Now, I mentioned earlier that why this is such an important issue. Austin Energy, let's face it, it's the asset of the city. It plays such a major role, but it's also a major tool for policy, especially when we're dealing with climate change. So, we absolutely cannot privatize. We have to fight every effort. We also have to fight the independent board. The council needs to be in control of this because of the unique role that Austin Energy plays with the city. But with that comes tremendous responsibility. The more I look at this issue, this will be the dominant issue of the next council, I'm convinced of this. We have to be very careful with finances and again, look at the transfer, we need to be able to draw as many experts as we need outside independent auditors and experts to look at how it's managed and we need to be as transparent as possible with that transfer so people know where the money is going.
I believe that the Austin Energy is the city's greatest asset and indeed, it should be in the control of the city councils. Any change to that, I think, would be negative to the city as a whole. I see that the Austin Energy provides affordability for our citizens as a result of us having it under the control of the council. It can also provide affordability for those people that have the least at times. So, it's something that's really important for us to keep from that perspective. We need the accountability and we need the transparency. From that end, we need to have, ensure that our books, when we're looking at the books with all the different, all the different accounts that Austin Energy has, that those different accounts are transparent in both its transfers and its actual revenue production and how they're being spent. And that's where an actual external audit will come into play that I've been talking about to do for a lot of our city programs. In addition to that, I think that what's best about Austin Energy is that it provides a home for innovation of all of the new initiative programs that can come online.
All right, thank you. We'll be starting with Becky next. This is also a one-minute question. Where do you stand on achieving Austin's climate protection goal, including implementation of the goal adopted by the city council in the Affordable Energy Resolution of making Austin Energy Generation Resources carbon-free by 2030?
I do support the goal in a nutshell, but I have to say that to me, the first priority is to the citizens and taxpayers of the city of Austin. And our goal, the goal is very admirable, but I want to have a dialogue because I think the impact, the costs, and the savings have to be discussed and fully understood.
I strongly support the goal. And again, because of climate change and that issue, there are principles stated in this plan, for example, closing FAG, getting off coal, trying to get to carbon neutral, that we must do in this state of Texas, the highest polluting state in the nation. I mean, that's, there is no other line of defense we're in. So, knowing that, however, it's very important that we keep an eye on the finances, an eye on the transfer, an eye on the management because of the financial impact that this has. There are many people out there waiting for us to screw this up, rooting for it. They want the environmentalists to ruin the utility and then they can say, oh, let's take this from you. So, never lose mind of that. That's why we have to look at each goal as it comes. We have to be very deliberate as to how we obtain this and we just have to keep focused towards the future, but also in partnership with the utility and the taxpayer response.
I absolutely support the goal. And with that said, I would tell you that I think we do need to be cautious though in terms of affordability because as we move forward with that, as all new things come online, things are always a little more expensive. So, while I support the goal wholeheartedly, I want to make sure that it's moving in that direction, that we do have a good plan for how we need to be able to pay for it. So, there we are, ensuring that all individuals are able to afford and be part of these new goals, but indeed, I support this goal.
I support it as well, so we can all sit down and give a level of support. It's important, but we all understand how important it is also to put ourselves strategically in a position where we can divest ourselves as well. Some investments that we've made perhaps have not been the best investments for a period. So, we need to own up to that responsibility. But going forward, in addition with my competition... But going forward, in addition to my competition I've already mentioned, you know, Austin's becoming one of the most expensive cities to live in. So I think as we look at delicate balance of how we continue to explore strategically on how to use more renewables and being more creative, and how we divest ourselves from some of the gold investments that we've made, we should work as a community to make sure we continue to make Austin as affordable as possible, where we're not losing the middle class and lower middle class out of the core. So it's going to take leadership, it'll take some great discussion. I think it's also going to take minds that are very financially sound and very financially smart on how we continue to make that transformation.
When this was discussed, that's in connection with, in keeping with the 2% affordability goal. So FAYET and Decker must be closed, and I'm looking forward to seeing the economic assessment point the way to how we can do that in a way that we continue to protect our 2% affordability goal. I would also say that, you know, I'm excited about the fact that we have renewables, and we have the solar and wind, distributed solar as opportunities for us to move away from fossil fuels to renewables. And so I support the types of the types of initiatives that were discussed in the generation plan report to support those kinds of programs. Thank you.
I also support the goal. When we look at setting goals, one thing we have to look at is how we get there realistically, how we do financially. I want to see how we ultimately want to close down FAYET and Decker. One thing we can't do is sell off the plant to someone else who just keeps using the same capacity that's now. It really doesn't, you know, give us any net benefit other than for us to say that we feel better for not having coal power to run the city anymore. I think that, you know, we have to set these goals realistically. We have to look at the finances. We have to make sure that we stick within this answer to the affordability goals, to make sure that the, by going to a more renewable-based energy source, we do not price people out of the utility. That's not going to be a win-win for people if we decide on that. So I'd say that once again, we need a very responsible method of transferring to a cleaner source of energy. Thanks.
I do, I wholeheartedly support the goal, but I also think it's exactly what I've said in previous two questions. It's a discussion. It's having that relationship with the residents and having that open dialogue and listening to not only what the council wants to do, what we do as, you know, there at City Hall, but what the residents want and what we're representing. And that's, that's the reason why we have this opportunity, because we don't have that voice. So I would say that, you know, open up discussion with the leadership. That's, that's a priority for the goal. And then also just to ensure that we have clean, affordable, and reliable energy going forward for generations to come. Thank you.
I support the climate protection goal, but the word "goal" doesn't get implemented. That guy is just... What we have to do is be careful that we get the cart before the horse here. It only moves fast if science will allow. So you can have a goal, and you can work towards it earnestly, but if it turns out that science doesn't allow it, like some people in Austin Energy suggested, then you may change your path somewhat or the pace of what you get there, or you're going to wind up being unaffordable. I'll give you a case of point. In 2008, we thought it would be great to have a biomass plant in East Texas. How's that been working for us? It took about five years for the thing to get built, and in the first six months of production, it only produced energy for two months. It was so unaffordable that they had to sell the energy that it produced into the grid because they couldn't get anybody here in Austin to fire. That's what helped us around our next year because we entered into a sole-source contract, and we're still in that contract for $2.3 billion if they would produce that much energy. So I'm only saying that solar looks more promising. We've said be careful. We don't commit another mistake by getting the cart before the horse.
Yeah, I think these are great goals, but we have to look at what, what can be done based on the existing technology. Certainly, it's great to shoot for, you know, I could shut down the FAYET plant tomorrow and make sure we never emit any more carbon than other, you know, discussing something with the goal. I could stop, and I would, but you have to look at, validate the affordability issues here and make sure that you're not going to spike the price of energy so it's unaffordable. You also have to look at, when we did get rid of the pole, and we're looking at a renewable energy portfolio in addition to natural gas, the problem with renewables, the solar and wind, is that they're barrier, depending on the whims of nature. So what you have to have is adequate storage technology to back it up. If you do, then it becomes realistic to really make sure the bulk generation capacity. If not, you still need to have natural gas in the portfolio for your demand generation, which is not great, but it's probably the least bad solution. Otherwise, you risk putting nothing which is based like A's.
Well, thank you. Yes, I also support the goal. The science is in. We know that gas and coal are contributing to our global warming plus polluting. So I think that as we go forward and as our energy needs change and increase, that none of our new generation should be with gas or coal. Renewables are getting better, the technology's better. We just recently purchased wind power at much lower price than before. But I wouldn't rush to the, to the closing of these plants. Let's not let emotion make our decision. Those huge data analysis on our coal and gas contribute about half our power right now. So I can see that all our new power coming in, we'll avoid that. But let's wind these down, have to get power to under, make sure that we have enough power, meet our needs, buffer the head of ourselves in the air, data analysis, make our decisions, make prudent decisions so that we don't leave ourselves short. Thank you.
Thanks. So we'll be starting with Dan on this question. Looks like you guys got it. Thanks. It's going to be another one-minute question. What is your position on retiring Austin Energy's gas-fired Decker plant and coal-fired FAYET?
Yeah, as I mentioned before, we need to, we need to shut down Decker in a responsible manner. As I mentioned in the last question, it doesn't do us any good to shut, to sell off the plant, sell off our interest in the plant just to have someone else run the plant in the future. We need to, we need to wind it down over time, or we need to find a more great way to, to get rid of our interest in the plant without having a huge financial burden from that. As Mike mentioned, we're already dealing with the Austin biomass plant, the water-treating plant that we don't need. We need to do this in a responsible way. We do need to do it sometime in the future. You know, no question about that.
Well, this is going to be short. I'd say that we close it, but again, it's doing it in a, in a responsible manner. In fact, just to prelude to what Mike mentioned about the other plants is that it's, you know, we've already been into this. We're already in that situation. So, you know, we have this opportunity with the Decker plant and not to just go over and do the same thing. We need to reach out to maybe some of, again, some of the other organizations that are familiar with this and ask their opinion, and ask what, what they have to say about it, and take that and use it. But don't do the same thing that we currently had already found once before. Thank you.
Both these sources are cleaner than what they once were. This is, however, the energy of the past. We will get there in the future. I think the coal-fired FAYET plant will be the first to go for obvious reasons, but the natural gas, unnatural gas right now is a lot of the vulnerable. Until we prove that we have a storage capacity for solar around the clock, in other words, there's times when it's just dark, and there's times when it's dark and winter, but we don't have a storage capacity for that right now. So we have to have three different sources of energy according to our Austin Energy experts. So if we hired them, we should listen to them rather than supersede them on the council. The last thing I want to say about that is that if we look back 16 years ago, we're looking 16 years in the future for this goal we're shooting for. If we look back 16 years ago, we were relying on nuclear energy in South Texas, and we did buy the biomass plant and we were relying on coal. So we're going in the right direction. I'm only concerned that we do it at a responsible pace.
Gas-fired Decker plant, whatever thing I read about that says that it's an older, inefficient type of plant, and building another one in its, to replace it, would be much more expensive than replacing that capacity. But the San Bill plant, the San Bill plant was a great example of more modern, efficient gas-fired plant that uses wastewater, to do much of its cooling instead of potable water. Still, as you, as you move ahead, you've got, while it would be nice to switch totally to renewables, you still have to have demand generation in, in your energy portfolio until there's adequate storage technology. With coal-fired, we own that thing with LCR, right now it's giving us 25% of our, of our power, and it would be nice to shut it down. I think it'd be great. I do think we need to do it in a prudent manner as quickly as possible, remembering that we need to take affordability into consideration.
Yes, thank you. We need to make sure that we have power to meet our needs. Now, eventually, we're going to be looking at this because they're going to age out now. As I've said before, all of our new generation can be on renewables. We can also incentivize, have incentives for solar power on people's homes and such. And we need to kind of gauge this as we continue forward. We need to make sure that we have the power that we need, and right now, these contribute much more of our power than anything else does. So we are going to be closing them down over time. They're going to age out. We're not going to remodel them. But we need to make sure that we have the power to meet our needs and just with renewables and as technology increases, and make sure that we don't make decisions on emotion, make sure we do data analysis, figures there properly. Thank you.
Well, you know, as I said before, you know, I do think that we need to close FAYET and Decker as expeditiously as possible, and we need an economic assessment or impact to help us understand how we can do that in a way and on a timeline that keeps us with our 2% affordability, you know, as we've, all of us have been experiencing keeping Austin affordable is an important goal. So I would also say that, having said that, I would also say that we need to pay attention to how we can improve our, you know, improve our access to renewables. So, for example, programs like shared energy storage, PACE program for businesses, the creation of an on-bill charging program for individuals and residential owners so that more people could have access to solar, community shared solar or neighborhood solar. Those are the kinds of things that we can also be working on to improve our ability to use solar in our community.
Decker especially, one of the primary reasons you want to look at that is because Decker could be a potential water source for us moving forward if we pursue our water conservation plans and protect our local sources. But the way I look at this, and it was mentioned earlier about the need for storage, I really do believe we are going to need more storage in order to accomplish both of these goals in a timely manner, and that's going to take an investment in research. And I think we're headed that right direction. But that's, I see closing these plants as something, not just getting rid of something that's wasteful, but it's going to take an investment to do it. And again, the key to that is looking at the transfer, looking at the management, and, and trying to find ways through transparency in the finances of the utility that we can in a sense invest in the clean energy goals for our future.
I certainly see the closure of plants are definitely inevitable. I think for me, the question is, what are we going to do? How are we going to implement the closure plan? And as we look at it, what are we going to, how are we going to be able to address the timeline? What are we going to replace it with at what cost? I think it speaks all back to what another individual author said, looking at it from the perspective of an economic plan and an economic incentive and how we move forward, an economic study and how we move forward with this. But before we move forward any further in terms of moving to close it, I, I can tell you as, as a resident, I would like to know how do we address these issues. I know that we've already been thinking about the answers to there, but for the most part, because obviously, some of the things that we're looking at is we need to reduce the demand of our own personal consumption, and I'm pretty aggressive with that. And then obviously, the increase, the increased use of having the renewables is also part of the plan. So that's how I'm approaching it.
Yes, I would agree that no question in my mind is the appropriate efficient goal to have was closing both these plants. I think the key is doing it in the most efficient, cost-effective manner, being responsible. And whatever we're replacing with, which is somewhat consistent with some of the things that you've heard, you need to make sure that it's sustainable. You know, to get rid of one source of energy and not be completely 100% certain that whatever you're replacing with is going to be reliable, I think is very important. And I think in addition to that, coming up with a master plan, what can we do, what can we do with the assets that we have? I think that's one of the things we haven't thought about very well at times, is that we're rushing to remove an asset or change the production of an asset, then let's look at how it can be perhaps productive against some other use of form in order to be able to help us again, I think, try to address some of the affordability concerns that we have here in the Austin community.
Thank you. I have to look at this from two different perspectives. And the first, with FAYET, with, there's three stacks. We are co-owners of two other stacks with LCR, and the third stack LCR owns. And while it would be very wonderful to say close it, that's not really up to the city of Austin because we have to work with LCR. I will say, one of the things that's coming down the pipe is they're going to have to be, they're, with the current environmental regulations, they're looking at putting scrubbers in the stacks. Maybe that's one of the things we could use to offset getting out, instead of paying for those scrubbers, we can look for alternative, alternative energy sources through that. So that's one thing with FAYET. With Decker, that's going to be an easier one for us to get out of, and I have no problem looking into that. Again, the impacts, the cost impacts are huge for me. There's been a number of people that have said, let's use Decker Lake as a water source. We don't know what chemicals are in there. That is currently the cooling water for the Decker Power plant. So if we look at that, then we have got to find out what's in that water. So, thank you.
All right, thank you all. We're going to have another one-minute question. What is your position on customer adoption of solar energy at homes and businesses, and what, if any, policy changes would you support?
Well, I will tell you that the more solar power we can have, the better. And not all homes are situated in a manner that you can actually utilize the panels. I know we looked at it at our home, and it was going to require that we had to actually remove a tree. And so we opted to keep the tree instead. Technically, we love our trees. But, but that said, it doesn't mean that we shouldn't be moving forward and being aggressive about making solar energy available to people, trying to find a way to lower the cost for the implementation for it, because it is still pricey, and it is, it's probably going to price out people that are in lower income areas. But I think if we have some shared programs where we can possibly bring solar power to those individuals, that would be very helpful, and it would really get us off the ground. There's no reason having as much sun as we have in Texas, and we're not taking full advantage of it. I'd love to see us be a leader in that area as a city, as we all know, it produces some great green jobs, good for the economy.
Yes, I do support, I want to have, you know, the use of solar. So one of the things I think is important is, as I've kind of mentioned about all the various variables, also with the communities, I think technology has improved quite a bit, where we also can look at compatibility. I know some, some residential areas are very concerned about how to make sure that they have standards, that neighbors are going to have them, that they are compatible with the standards of the neighborhood. But in the spirit of that, I do think we should continue to promote the use of solar. I think we should continue offering incentives to try to reduce the cost so it doesn't become an alternative source of energy that is connected to the have and have-nots. I think that is a source that everyone should have access to, and as leaders, we have a responsibility to make sure that accessibility is made available.
Thank you. I'll make this pretty short and sweet. I'm a huge proponent of solar. I would love to have solar on my house. I had a house a while ago that was built in 1932, and there was no way that that house could accommodate the solar panels because of the roofline on it, or actually just the structural on the roof. I think we need to make it as easy as possible for residents to install solar. One of the things that I know, as I mentioned in an earlier forum, was the idea of a community solar garden, for lack of a better word. I think that's a real interesting proposition that we need to look at, that there could be solar panels or solar gardens that can help power, you know, multiple houses at the same time. And I also think we need to look at how we're paying for solar, how the subsidies are working, because as people get off the grid, then Because as people get off the grid, then they're not paying to help redo those subsidies. And I'll also say that there's a lot of residents in District D that are not on Austin Energy. I'm one of them. We are incurred now, so that's got to be a consideration as well. Thank you.
Yeah, as far as P E C goes, if I was on Austin Energy, I would have panels on my roof right now. That was not having the rebates that Austin offers was the reason we did not put the panels on, because it was just too expensive. So obviously, though, for Austin Energy customers, we need to continue to strengthen those rebates as long as we continue to have government subsidies, which also help with that. It's very valuable. I think as far as financing that, PACE financing, I think Anne mentioned, things you can finance through your property tax or finance through a fee on your monthly bill over time, these things help more people and makes solar more available to a greater range of customer. And ultimately, I think that's what we're going to need, the community gardens, community solar. This is a way that we can reach those folks on a lower income level and also let them participate in as well and also enjoy some interview segments.
Well, I'd say more solar is better. That's definitely a plus. But it's also, you know, when, when solar first came out and, you know, 20 years ago, the, the cost of solar was more. Well, today, it's, it's affordable, that we can do it. But it's, but it's implementing the way that we do it and how we do it. So, you know, I definitely like Becky's idea, just as a self-sufficient homeowner, you know, that, that of course is, you know, an idea. But the community garden for, for maybe some residents that aren't able to put the solar on their houses, provide that in our neighborhoods. And so I definitely think that that's a policy, that's, that's something that we can implement here in the city of Austin. And I fully support solar energy. Thank you.
And as I said, the materials have gotten much better and much cheaper in installation and cheaper. Now, there's an area of homes in South Austin, over a half a million dollar piece, where there's whole clusters, whole blocks of houses that are retrofitting now with solar panels on their roof. I think it should be a goal of ours to see that we afford that same thing, that we make that same thing affordable to, to lower-income houses as well, because they've got the same sunshine that's going for them and Austin Energy benefits by having that electricity go into the grid in the long term. So we, we should have that as a goal, not district clean energy, but for affordable energy, because the kind of materials that we have now, if we can like, if we can light as many houses as possible, it will bring down the costs. We've just got to make sure that our city doesn't get the smart idea that dislike when we started conserving water, that they ought to raise the rates because we're now not using enough electricity. But I think we're one way to go.
Yeah, I think allowing customers to use business or homeowner use solar panels to add both of a personal use or business use and to add electricity back to the grid is great. It allows property owners to monetize private property. It allows, it allows homes to really to be self-reliant. And also, it's, we have a great opportunity here to expand smart grid technology and work on early managing these, the movement of electricity, clean energy through the, through the grid out of these distributed solar panels. We definitely need to keep working with, on incentivizing this to the rebate program and having creative financing so low-income people can buy all type of solar panels as well as any home upgrades that are required by the city in order to be part of these solar, smart grid programs. And yeah, the community solar garden idea is good as well, so you can maximize the use of solar within the city.
Yes, I definitely support solar in homes and businesses. I think it's an appropriate goal for Austin to have. And while the technologies have improved quite a bit, the payback is still too long. I think the council needs to work with federal, state, and local funds to try to incentivize to get people to do retrofit, but also to include something for builders so they can offer a solar option for new constructions. As, as we have new construction here, we can increase the amount of solar that we have in here. And I think we should also pursue new business and solar development with the environmentally conscious citizenry that we have here and the inclination we have towards solar. I don't see why we can't be an R and D hub for solar technology going forward. Thank you.
Yes, I agree. I, we have solar on our home and we're able to afford that because of the kinds of help that you can get from the utility. So a couple of things I'd like to say. First off, I do support the kinds of things we're all talking about to make solar more affordable, things like the on-bill financing as a way to finance for residential customers, PACE program as a way to finance for small businesses, distributed solar, community solar, neighborhood solar as a way to, to share the cost. But I also think that, I'd like to make two other comments. I think that it's important for us to make sure that all parts of the city, all parts of the city take advantage of solar. So I think we need to do some analysis and develop some metrics to look at how, how solar is distributed across the city, both in terms of commercial and residential, and take some proactive steps towards making sure that that's available across. In terms of the financing, we have to look at the finance line. So, and make sure that our financing model, I know I'm over, make sure our financing model tracks volume. And that's, I'll talk about that in the next question.
I'm fully supportive of more solar in the city, rooftop solar, both in residential and commercial uses. You know, solar is, as I mentioned before, solar is a lot cheaper and more efficient than it used to be. And we're at a point now where it is, we have the ability to finance solar in a way that is pretty much, you know, net zero cost. You know, I think that on-bill financing is a great tool to help people pay for it. I think we can probably be a little more creative in how we find financing tools, our rebate programs, to make sure more people have, have it as a feasible financial option for themselves. I think we need to look at, not only looking at ways to get solar on existing property, but getting solar on new development, both residential and commercial. It's usually cheaper to put, put something like solar on a new building as opposed to trying to retrofit it. It's just usually cheaper because it's part of the building process, cuts down the cost. And I can see us do that in the development.
...country or in other states. And I'm not aware of any fracking programs going on here in the Austin area, so I'm not sure what to say about that. Obviously, what we should do is select the energy sources or resources that, that are modern and will be clean for the long term for the good of Austin and obviously the good of our region.
Yeah, when you look at the energy extraction, you're having, you're sourcing again. And to my knowledge, I'm not sure how you, at this time, with the existing technology for gas distribution, for instance, would, would find out if, if it's being sourced from, from frac wells or not. You know, if you can, and if you could do that, then I would say, okay, then analyze it and consider it as, as part of your policy-making decision matrix. But otherwise, you know, we're not buying any sort of fuel oil or any sort of gasoline-based product or petrochemical-based products that are coming out of frac wells. But then again, we should just keep up with what we're doing, which is pursuing minimized use of fossil fuels in general and increase reliance on renewables, efficiency, and smart grid technology.
Okay, as we've said before, that I believe that all of our new generations, our generation needs increase and we replace older plants, we're, we're going to focus on renewable energies. We've got wind, we've got solar, we're going to be getting better. The technology's already improved. We just caught wind power just last year at a much cheaper price than we had before, so we've got a very good deal on that. So I don't see, because the science is in and whatever the cost benefit starts not working, so we're not going to be bringing in any new coal or any new gas. We're going to be phasing those down. Again, we can't really determine the source of the fuel that we do use. I think that we need to focus more on the, on the needs of the Austin citizens and just as we go forward, we're using renewables, we're doing, we're doing the right thing as far as our increased energy needs and we're winding down on our coal and gas. And so I don't think we really have any effect on the fracking. Thank you.
I would, I would say that, you know, the question relating to how we, how we select the resources that we use, that absolutely the water use requirements has to be one of the criteria we look at. To the extent possible, we should be choosing resources with the lowest possible water given the challenges that we have in our community with water. So that's what I would, I would emphasize with regard to that. I wanted to say, I want to go back to the question I was getting at before in terms of financing issues, and this relates to both of our utilities. We have to examine our financing model because the fundamental issue is that when our revenues are based primarily or so dependent upon use, what happens to us is as we conserve, we reduce revenue. So what we've got, we have to maintain a financing model so that our rates, people are, people get lower rates if they use less. So that means that we have to look for other sources of revenue and be creative about that as well as reducing our costs.
To me, this, this question is, is similar to, you know, like David talking about as far as, in the future, as we move towards more renewables, which generally use less water, use solar, wind, we move away from coal, nuclear, you know, fracking, which should use tons of water for cooling and extraction. I think we're naturally going to progress away from energy sources that warrant water. And, you know, I have concerns about, about what's in the fracking chemicals, how they're, how they're deposited underground or leaks that, that may occur. How we probably all see the gas line documentary with women who are under fossil and they can start catching on fire. Those are, those are specific uses of water that we want to get away from. But I think as we move towards renewable use, I think we're naturally going to move away from, from those types of sources that may be part, such as, you know, exorbitant use of water.
Well, I would say on the, on the water use regarding fracking is, we definitely move away from that in, on the production and how we do, how we, how we produce our energy and to make it clean, affordable, and reliable on the, on the clean energy. You know, as you mentioned before, on the, on the wind, that, that has become a reliable source that, that does not focus on the, on the fracking and also the water use regarding that. And then we, we mentioned the solar, that, that too is also an affordable, reliable energy source and it's clean. So I would say definitely move away from that, the way that we produce and also regarding the fracking and the water use. Thank you.
Yes, I believe the strategic direction that Austin Energy is moving in is moving in the right direction, on the right trajectory, where the issue of questions we have posed, I think would be minimal risk and not of any great concern based on the portfolio of renewables and direction that we're going to add, a range of different alternatives into our toolbox. But I would say though, as we look at acquisition and community transformation, of course, it's going to be critical that we have a, an overall water conservation plan that far as that strategic plan within itself should focus on making sure that we are conserving as much water through any source in which we are acquiring energy in order to provide services to our community. So that is a higher priority, but I think we're on the right trajectory.
Thank you. And as Mike said, I think we have to be very careful and tell others what to do and how to act. I'd love to sit here and tell you that we should never take an energy source from any fracking. I am not an energy expert. I'm nowhere near an energy expert. I would look to you all and to everybody else in this audience to help educate me. We do have to reduce our dependency on fossil fuels. And as the technology and other things advance, we can reduce that dependency and rely more on solar or wind power. But right now, I can't tell you that I know where energy comes from, if it comes from the fracking or non-fracking, and I just don't think that we are out of, out of stage where we can honestly say yes or no. It's going to require a lot more education and a lot more partnerships with people that do know.
Well, I like this question because it's really an example of where climate change intersects with drought and intersects with energy. So this is, this is an example of the problems that we're facing. We need to put water use in the forefront of everything we do with the drought. We may get a rainy year this year, but all the forecast models show it's going to be a finite resource. So of course, we would want to take into account how much water do we use? Now, I think this question is pertaining more to new production and what are we thinking about going forward with new production? Do we want to continue using frac wells, new frac wells, for example, new gas plants, when we know what it does to the water? Do we want to continue with coal and how much water does it have to be used to cool the plant? These are rational questions, and I think that the utility as a statement of our values will need to look at that. But also, that's the model of where hopefully the industry is headed as we move toward more renewables. So it's really a natural transition.
My response is probably going to shock you, because I don't think it should give you away, and I think we should just boycott. That's what I really think we should do. We really need to work really hard to get as many of our renewables going, so that way we're not dependent on having to make those, those choices. If we, if we find ourselves in a, in a good, strong position where our renewables are definitely meeting our needs, then we should not have to be going there and we should be able to have better protection of our water supply. Because ultimately, that water source is, is probably the number one energy source that we need to be most concerned for and about in the future.
Yeah, affordability is one that I think all of us are hearing in almost every single forum right now. The first and primary thing I would say with respect to the low-income customers is truth in your bill. There are a lot of things that are added to the bill that just increase the overall cost. So I think that's one of the first things that needs to be done. And the second thing, not necessarily the bill, but I would say more along the lines of we need to work with the lower-income individuals and make their homes energy efficient. And I don't necessarily just mean energy efficient in sciences or things of that nature, but really come in and do energy audits and make sure that they are saving energy where possible.
Well, of course, I support this program going forward for affordability. I think some of the things we're already doing, we continue to do with weatherization of low-income homes, we should continue on that, but also administer it closely, look at the benefit ratio that we're getting. For example, if we're spending an exorbitant amount retrofitting an old house or apartment, and then the customer's energy use goes way up. And I'm thinking of a case, for example, where we're putting in new central air conditioning where central air conditioning doesn't exist, where perhaps window units might help. We need, those are hard questions to ask, but we need to do that because again, it's an overall affordability issue on the bill. Transparency in the billing, of course, and the fees, holding to the affordability goals of 2%. Also on the fuel charges and the fees, because people don't differentiate when they pay the bill every month. And that can benefit everyone regardless of income.
I can think of three things that come to my mind immediately. First and foremost, obviously, is making sure that all our homes, our little living homes, all over parts of town have every opportunity for energy efficient programs. And we really do a good job of getting out there and making those programs available to those homes. Secondary to that, you know, when you look at your utility bill, there's a ton of fees in there. And I think that those fees really need to be examined, because so many of those fees have been placed in there over the last five years as, as another way to really increase our taxes without increasing your taxes. They've just now come in the way of the fee. So I'd like for us to seriously take a look at what is, what are those fees actually doing for us as a city? And then how can we better lower that and then examine it from the perspective of those individuals that may not be able to pay those fees? And last and thirdly, is we do have a current assistance program within Austin Energy. We need to take a look to see if it is actually meeting the goals that were set out We need to take a look to see if it is actually meeting the goals that we set out to do. That's the first place to start.
Yeah, I, I think it's critical to continue to provide education outreach. A lot of folks don't understand the cost of internal analysis. Of course, we've got to make sure we have a good story to tell, to write a good story, that we can encourage people why they would want to make some of the retrofitting changes or why they would want to vote for solar or some other alternative use of, of energy or mechanisms that would help to be able to reduce their costs. It has to be a good cost of internal analysis, good story. One of the things I think is really important is kind of the big elephant in my mind, to me, our, our region has experienced a great deal of economic growth, and I think this new campus is going to have to really take a good, strong look at all the additional revenue that we are generating based on growth, to make an assessment, determination, do we need to continue to have the level of transfer that we currently have? I really think that is a question that has been created, and I'm not sure that that question is to continue to be in place, especially with the massive growth that we're experiencing. So I think that's the first place where there's immediate opportunity that we can reduce rates by simply looking at the level of transfer that is coming back into the general fund that I think is no longer required at this particular point in time based on our growth.
All right. And just to follow up on that last question on the water use, I think that with our demand generation capacity, we need to look into the ways that use the most, are most efficient with water use and where we can maximize reused water. Now with affordability, I think that we need to, yeah, we do need to look at the assistance programs, see if this meeting its goals, we need to work, keep working with low-income homeowners, especially with older homes, to make sure that they've got weatherization, insulation, other measures for efficiency to lower the demand side. Also, I think that we have a great opportunity here with companies like Helio Bold, our emerging clean tech sector, to, and, and the smart grid technologies that are here to try pilot programs out in low-income areas and incentivize those companies to help defray the costs for the consumers there or neutralize the costs in exchange for giving a test out some of their smart grid and renewable distributed solar products.
Yes, well, we own the utility, so we can certainly structure incentives in our rates to decrease usage. We also need to offer support for homes, homeowners to, to better make their homes more energy efficient. And we need to offer that especially to low-income. We, the city services really need to take care of our vulnerable citizens especially. A lot of the bigger homes can easily put in more efficient, more efficient upgrades to their home, but we need to focus on the lower income. I also like to offer, again, as we said before, incentives for solar power so that we can get them a little bit more off the grid. As we said before, that we've already had, we've had these incentives, federal programs, state programs, local programs. We need to take advantage of those and make sure that they're able to communicate to the citizens out there, make sure they're available. I think a lot of people in Austin are aware of what rebates and support there is available. We need to pursue that.
Well, I believe there's a number of things we need to do. Obviously, we need to make, we need to pay attention to our rates and make sure that our, our rates support conservation, not only for homeowners but also for renters. We also need to continue our customer service supports for lower-income folks. And along that line, I think that we should take the opportunity to look at collaboration with other social service entities in town. There may be opportunities with the other types of assistance programs out there to leverage the dollars that Austin Energy has and perhaps actually better serve low-income customers. For example, we should also look at affordable housing programs, see how affordable housing is built in terms of energy efficiency, and look at the financing dollars and funds that are available in those arenas. And then finally, I think we also, when we look at our customer assistance programs, we should look at the, the benefit they're offering, the cost, the cost of them versus the benefit so that the customer is actually getting that financial benefit.
First of all, I think we need to look at making sure that Austin Energy remains affordable for all, all customers. And I think the first thing we need to do is look at independent audit of the utility itself, which is something that just has, has never been done. When we look at providing retrofitting incentive rebate programs for low-income customers, we need to look at programs we currently have a place to see the cost versus the benefit of those. For example, when we look at, you know, I think Ed had mentioned, you know, lower-cost window air, air conditioning units, it's different than going in and doing a HVAC installation, you know, supplying other, other high-efficiency appliances. When you look at the payback, how long it takes to pay back those, those programs versus lifespan of the units themselves, you often find that the, the useful life of the appliance or air conditioning unit in itself is, is shorter than the time it takes to pay back. So when we look at these programs, we really have to make sure that we're, we're not costing more money than is necessary by, by supplying products that really just aren't going to last long enough to pay them off.
Well, I think it, it comes down to education. It to, you know, as a, you know, as a resident and as, as you live in your, in your home, some, you know, your everyday activity that you, that you do, that you might not be aware of some of the lights that you, you have turned on, some of the usage that you're doing. So I, so I believe that it's, it comes down to educating the homeowner, the renter, the person that's occupying that utility. But I would, I would like to move and say in regards to solar and maybe possibly looking at the way that we have already, the current buildings and the assets that we have with the, with, as, as the city. We have, you know, city housing, we have our city buildings, or we have Austin Energy works out of, we can maybe put solar on top of their building instead of moving them out. But then also say maybe in partnership with the school district too as well. Thank you.
Actually, I think Austin is doing a pretty good job with indexing bills, which means, of course, if you can, if you can use at, at lower rate than you're already getting a very low rate. However, we could be doing more with helping low-income families with weatherizing, weatherizing their house so they will not use more than, more than they need to in what's available with, with the ceiling doors and additional insulation and like. And as Dan said, I think assistance with the clients is where they can use window air conditioners instead of central air would help. We need to lower the fees on our bills as well. You probably recall about two or three years ago when Austin Energy said, oh, we haven't raised our rates in so many years, city council, you need to help us out. And then this year, when they tried to build a $60 billion, $60 million dollar bill, building in East Austin, it was also revealed that they were running a $60 million dollar profit this year. So we have to make sure that the utility is well-managed as well so that they don't take more from public than they need.
Okay, we're going to move into some 30-second questions, so prepare yourselves. All right, we're going to stay on the same topic for the first one. Fifty-five percent of Austinites are renters. What is your position on requiring owners of apartments and other rental properties to meet minimum energy efficiency standards?
Okay, I'm, I'm not comfortable requiring or imposing things on anybody that owns a house, ensuring there are people here that a lot of directors probably do also own a property. I think we can use this, I'd rather use incentives, try to get people to do this so that they, that they don't feel like pushed upon. And I think that we, we have like the ability for, have availability of federal, state, local funds to do that.
I support incentives to, to meet minimum energy efficiency standards. I think that the city can go farther than incentives when we're talking about property that the city is paying for. For example, affordable housing kinds of units that use city dollars or where we're talking about city land. And so in those cases, I, I can see adding a requirement for meeting energy efficiency standards.
I actually am a rental property owner and I have gone to great lengths to put into my properties complex lights, light bulbs, energy-efficient windows, attic insulation, energy-efficient appliances. For me, that's really, I want, I want renters who want a lower electricity bill, I want to use as a selling point for renting my property. I don't think that's a common viewpoint among property owners. I think we need to do more, like the idea of incentive programs to make sure that people don't feel that they're not just spending a ton of money without getting anything, getting anything back in turn as the property owner.
Well, I, I too don't feel comfortable requiring the, the owner to do anything, but, but I would just say in short that, that all, that we all have to do our part in conserving our energy and implementing, you know, as, as an owner of a rental property, you know, the landlord, doing its due diligence and ensuring that there are appliances in the, in the way that we conserve our energy. I do say that, I will say that, that I am for that. Thank you.
There's, there's two kinds of owners here. There's private owners and there's companies that own, and we have a few different, I think requiring is the wrong term. We have a city code that's too long already, and whenever you do that, then you have to have people to go around and check for compliance and do measurements, and it will just get to be more expensive. If you require a corporate owner to do anything, just like if they require you to do something, you can bet they're going to pass that on and higher rent to the people that are renting. We have to incentivize, we have to give them a reason to want to do it, like Dan is saying. If you, if you do that, it won't happen.
Yeah, I agree that we should not put in, put these in requirements, but should use incentives, keeping in mind, yeah, definitely there's a distinction between individual, people that are individual owners of property, corporate owners. One thing to keep in mind with the incentives is that a lot of times when you're dealing with renters, the property owner is putting in a capital investment, but the operating cost savings are actually being borne on the rent. So you have to make it worth, basically worth the owner's while to participate in this program that's beneficial in the long run.
Well, I think the, the points that this is most effective would be the point of new construction and the point of redevelopment of apartment complexes. And new construction, of course, you can do through code, we all know that. But I favor looking at protecting the existing apartment stock as a way to control affordability. So why not use these energy efficiency requirements, grants, incentives as an inducement for them to preserve the existing apartment stock versus new construction, which is more expensive?
I certainly would be open to seeing what programs are out there that would certainly assist the current stock that we have, the rental stock, to make it more energy efficient. I myself have a rental property and I keep it up every year if we do the energy standard simply because it helps us as a whole, it helps the family that I've got there to keep them there, and it also helps with the overall value of the property. Not everybody looks at it like from that point of view, but I would be very supportive of having programs that would indeed help renters and apartment owners to ensure that we had good properties that were energy efficient.
Of course, it makes sense when we're talking about new development or if we're talking about a project where the city is a partner in the development, or the city owns the land, went into a partnership. Yes, we are definitely in a position to negotiate or require certain standards, but in, in the event that we're outside of both those two mechanisms, I think it's important, as I mentioned earlier, that we need to have a good value-added proposition, we need to have a story. And if we make it attractive, I too own rental property, and I find it to be an attractive way of marketing my property that I think people would be very interested if we worked in collaboration and in partnership versus seem like we're trying to be heavy-handed, protein-type of government structure.
Thank you. As Ed mentioned, I think this is something that's probably best addressed in the development or the redevelopment phase. I would wholly support as long as these costs are not passed on to the renters. That's got to be first and foremost, we cannot add, increase the price to the renters. We've got to keep it affordable. I'll also say that my husband used to build houses and they were part of the green energy program, and that was a huge selling point. And I know that's taken on the fire, but I think that can be explored with the renter area as well because I do believe it's a selling point. Excellent. We'll be starting with a lisa. All right, again, 30 seconds for this. What is your position on the continued use of utility subsidies to industrial and large commercial customers?
Wow, I hadn't thought about it. My first gut reaction is that I wouldn't want it to do.
My responsibility would be consistent with what my approach is to all economic incentives. I think that we have a industry here where we have a gap. When you look at low-tech and no-tech positions, I think if you want to attract certain industries to be able to support, where I think we can provide jobs for low-income and middle-income families to ensure that we're not losing our middle class, I think in that case we should at least consider it and keep it in a toolbox. I think you should always keep tools at your, at your disposal to be able to use them where you think it's appropriate to help build economic gaps.
I think subsidies to some extent are necessary with the way that companies stand and do move around today. And I would like to work out independent agreements with each company that comes forth for an incentive and somehow tie that incentive to the use and/or increase in use of green energy.
I think the environment that we're in right now, we need to take a breath on incentives and reexamine what we're doing there. My information would be that for these large-scale users and new deals coming in, people seeking in, I would not favor the utility incentives at this point. We're probably in some long-term deals that are grandfathered in and will continue those. But let's step back, take a look at this and see what impact that makes on the utility budget when we no longer are offering these big utility incentives.
I would favor reexamining these arrangements with the utility subsidies, and I would say that going forward, I don't think that we should engage in utility subsidies to the industrial and the large commercial customers. I think we would have to have an extraordinary, we would have to get an extraordinary benefit in return to do that. So I think we should reexamine the, the subsidies that we have in place. I don't think we should use them going forward and, because I think they impact the overall budget and the cost to the residential customers.
I, I think we have to look at this as a, in a balance of fairness between residential users and industrial, industrial and commercial users, similar to what we're seeing right now with the, the property tax rates in residential and commercial interest. I do think we need to look at some kind of economic study on how much the, the utility benefits from offering subsidies. There is a huge baseload of, of power generated to these large industrial and commercial customers, and I'd like to see what happens if we, we take that away and what kind of net benefit or cost there is to, to remove the subsidies and overall revenue for the utility.
I would say fully continue, but I definitely would be in favor to review, reviewing the process, reviewing the subsidies and see how the pros and cons of how they're in place, but then also the con to ensure that the affordability that's, you know, from the commercial side and the industrial side is affordable for them too as well because they are a business, they are an owner, they do possibly live in the city limits. But then I'd say move to more green energy. Thank you.
I frankly wasn't aware that they were doing this, but if they are, then I would hope the city would be getting in return for that some control over what those industrial and large commercial customers are doing to improve or leverage to be more economical in their usage into, in new building, to build the kinds of things that we want them to build, energy efficient ones.
Any, any use of incentives, subsidies, it's, it's a tool in the economic development toolbox. We have to look at, you know, first what the return on investments can be for the community, and it meets various specific goals that are in line with policies and values of people in Austin. So, you know, if you can use these to compel energy efficient building and clean energy, clean energy use or distributed solar on-site, or you're subsidizing a company that's bringing in jobs we want, like good, blue collar, middle-class jobs, they need to work, etc., but otherwise they don't.
For incentives in general, incentives are a valuable tool. Holding a status quo in Austin is not going to sustain our quality of life, but let's leverage them more for smaller, new businesses than large corporations. And we can also be selective. I think we can rely on Austin's desirable location and workforce and make sure, so that, to bring bits workforce, and make sure, so that, to bring businesses in instead of just relying on incentives. And let's make sure that we set aggressive goals and make sure that they do give value to the city, not to all the citizens, and not just something unclear. Thank you.
Okay, this next question, we, you'll see we had it written, this is a thirty-second question, but we're doing really well on time, and it's a bit of a new topic, so live it up, take a minute if you want. All right. Austin Energy owns a sixteen percent share of the two South Texas nuclear reactors, which are set to retire in twenty twenty-seven and twenty twenty-eight, but may be relicensed. Do you favor keeping, adding to, or phasing out nuclear power as an energy source for Austin Energy?
I don't even need fifteen seconds, we need to phase it out.
All right, well, again, phase out nuclear power, but then also not only that, but then move forward and utilize my time, but then to move forward to green energy and clean energy and utilizing solar and wind and, and other resources that we have out there that, that are the current way that we, we produce our energy. Thank you.
Yeah, I think there's a bias when people say nuclear energy, but the nuclear energy we have nowadays, science has evolved like it has in every other base of energy. So I, I think we need to make that decision at the time, instead of saying right now, oh, it's nuclear, we have to get rid of it. It depends on what the component, what part it plays in the overall Austin energy, what it needs, because remember, their needs are to provide us clean and affordable energy. If it's clean and affordable at that time, and it fills a niche where we are not able to replace it, then we need to make decisions as late as possible. Thank you.
Well, with nuclear, there's always the downside risk of a horrifying environmental catastrophe. And when you look at the South Texas nuclear plant in particular, it's been, there's a history of mismanagement and all sorts of safety violations. We should definitely pull out of that project. The Nuclear Regulatory Commission's had issues with, not only this project, but just with working with TCEQ in general and the Texas regulators. And I would say that, I'm not a fan of nuclear power in general, and especially in a state where you have someone who's about to become governor that in the past has tried to prevent people from figuring out what kind of chemicals and explosives are in plants next to their houses. I don't really think that this is the kind of state where we should be running nuclear power plants. So, no, we should, we should stay.
Okay, we've said before quite a bit about how we want to go to green and renewables, that we want to stay away from gas and coal. We do have to kind of remember that nuclear does not contribute to greenhouse gases, it doesn't pollute. And I know that the opposition to nuclear power is best financed, best organized, and strongest there is out there. But I kind of look at this, we've got fourteen years, so let's see what the technology is taking us on this. We're making tremendous advances all over Europe, we've got quite a bit of nuclear power coming out there. We've got fourteen years to decide on this. I'd like to stay with it, let's, let's, again, let's not decide on emotion, but let's use data and analysis as we get closer to that time, and make the best decision for the city and the power that we need at that time. Thank you.
I would say phase out. I do not support additional nuclear generation capacity, and also I think that we need to resist any efforts to relicense these earlier than expiration date. So I think that's, that's gonna be something that we need to guard against. So I would say phase out and resist any attempts to relicence.
I would agree with your comments that fourteen years is a long time out. And I think we need to be smart and prudent and continue, as we talked about more earlier, then we continue all the other alternative measures that we're looking at, alternative options that we're looking for, and we'll, we'll, we'll continue on that trajectory. And I think we reevaluate, see where we are five years from now, ten years from now, I think we need to make sure that we're pushing what is working for us and to ensure that, again, that it is sustainable and very sustainable, sustainability and cost efficiency. So I think we're in a good position, we have an opportunity to continue to look at how we need to be once we get to the point of actually renewing the license. If we can move towards phasing out, I think that's ideal, I think we have to be prudent and cautious and smart.
Thank you. And I too support in concept the phasing out, but I would have to say we are nearly fifteen years away, so the, but the conversations have got to begin now. So I favor having the conversations and taking our time and identifying this resource that would replace nuclear if we decide to replace it. And if not, then we, we've done our due diligence and we know what we need to do.
Again, fourteen years, that is a long time, but that gives possibly some time for science to come up with a way to solve the nuclear waste issue, and they're not close to a breakthrough now, maybe they will be. Look at that when the time comes, we just need to approach this all deliberately, look at our entire stock of generation, if we're moving forward with renewables, if we're closing DECA, or if we get to where we're, we're closing FED, so forth and so on, see where we are at the time. But twenty twenty-eight is an old nuclear reactor, and I, it should not keep going past that time, all the more reason to pursue renewables the way we want to pursue them.
I would say that we prepare ourselves so that we have the renewables in place to take up the place of the energy that these power plants are doing for us, and that we are, at the same time, we're also ensuring that we can afford the new, the new renewables that we've got, and that way we position ourselves to actually phase out. So that would just say, let's face out, we'll be prepared, we must be prepared, and it has to be affordable as we're moving in that direction.
All right, that's it for the questions. We are gonna move into closing statements, and Becky will be starting us off.
I guess you get to hear it from me three times first tonight. I'll make it short and sweet. I hope that the answers that I have given you all tonight show that I am committed to working with each of your organizations and making our community green. I, I will be perfectly honest with you and tell you, I don't know everything there is to know, but I look towards each of you helping me become better educated, better knowledgeable, so that we can move our community forward.
Thanks, folks, for throwing this tonight, it was a great discussion, and I hope we have one of these in the future. But I think there's been a lot of emotion and coverage and excitement over the energy issue in the past month or so, and resolutions the city has passed, and people have wondered, well, what's the big deal, why is it such a big deal? The answer to that question is, if we lived in a state where the governor would even admit that climate change was taking place, much less caused by man, we may not be feeling the pressure to do something like we are on the local level. As I hinted at earlier, there is no frontline with state government on this, we're it. So that's why we're taking this, it's a, it's an example of how we're putting our values into policy. But again, the financial impact is paramount, and we have to be very, very careful with this, because all self- affordability is in the minds of everyone. So that's, those are two big pillars that we need to carry forward and be careful in the future, and I'm confident that we can do that.
Thank you once again to everybody. Again, just for a little background, I am running with my experience, offering all of my experience to you. As many of you know, I also served on the AGR movement to bring the TEN One single-member district system to our city, as well as in the past was very active with respect to bringing the SOS ordinance into our community. I will tell you that you will find in me a very open candidate, and you will find me to be a councilwoman that's gonna be very open to innovation and ideas coming forward. That is the future, technology's our future. The technology that comes forward out of all of these energy ideas and energy measures that we've talked about tonight is a direction as a city we need to go so that we can set ourselves as not just the standards of the state, but continue to lead the nation. So I'd like to offer that. The last thing I would tell you as we're running out of time is that by having a financial independent audit is critical for us to go into Austin Energy so that we can make, make best decisions about how to move those monies. Thank you.
I too would like to thank you all for hosting the event this evening. So energy, to me, is one of those issues that is very complex, one, and it has a major revenue impact. I mean, the utility district in the city of Austin is a major revenue generator, and it has a major impact on stakeholders' lives. So I think this is a type of issue that has to be on the forefront of the conversation and should continue to be. It's an issue, I think, that not only has an impact on, again, where we live, learn, work, and play, but it's gonna have, continue to have an impact on living building here in the city. Again, I have been in southwest Austin for my entire thirty-four years, I've served on the Western Oaks Board, education is my passion, currently some of the Austin Public Education Foundation, I've been on the Boundary Task Force, so I've had experience in dealing with very complex issues, and spent eight years on the planning of this. I, I too can't even leave Austin for that long. But, but, but being involved in that environment gives me the proven experience, not only from the private and citizen side, but also being involved in government, I look forward to having the opportunity to serve. Thank you so much.
Well, just like, like to say thank you for the invite for this evening. And just to recap on, on who I am, my name is Jason Denny, I'm a candidate for District Five, and I look forward to bringing accountability, transparency, and the fiscal responsibility that, that we need on Austin Energy. For an example, to bring somebody that's willing to listen and put forth customer service that's, that's in the office, that's downtown, and I'm just a regular guy, not a downtown insider. Thank you.
How many of you are from District Five? Okay, that's good. So here's what it's about, we have a seat that we can choose this November, and if you're eager to have that seat, then you can even vote early on the twentieth of October. Two years ago, I participated with the organization that helped bring TEN One to the ballot, because there's a lot of people in, in the city council in downtown that didn't want it. It's your seat, the question is who do you trust to be a leader and to have a two-way dialogue with you? I live in far south Austin, I've lived there for nineteen years, I was a colonel in the Air Force, I've been the president of the South Austin Civic Club, I'm the national treasurer for a nonprofit organization right now, I have a tenure here as a financial advisor, I have an MBA. This is a big city, it should be run like a Fortune 500 company, not like the past city council has been running. We should confine ourselves to the issues that concern Austin to make it the best possible Austin it can be for all of you.
As a, as a somewhat young professional and part of the, you know, the group emerging, the emerging generation of political and business leadership here in town, I, I have a lot of, a lot of long-term vision for the city, and that includes economic prosperity as well as sustain, sustainability. And so when I look at the city's ownership of Austin Energy, I see a fantastic opportunity for Austin to become a leader in clean technology. And as a member of council, I would like to, to drive that effort. We've got the University's Engineering School here, we've got business and industry like Heliavolt here, we've got electric car infrastructure here, we've got a population that's interested in participating in efficient, sustainable energy programs. It's a great opportunity for us to become a technology leader, a thought leader, and a great example for how you can have a prosperous, clean energy economy, and that we can really make us leaders of Texas.
Let's remember that we aren't broken. We have got the best problem in the world, people want to live here. We've got a great music scene, we're environmentally sensitive, a lot of events, and we have strong economics. I myself enjoy the entertainment and outdoors immensely here. We in District Five and Eight have access to so much. The issues that you hear tonight and the issues you hear throughout the campaign are really opportunities for us to make this city even better, and I look forward to taking you down that path. Thank you.
We have the opportunity with TEN One to bring all parts of the city together to be a leader in clean energy. And I think that we're all proud of Austin, and, and this is something that we can do, we can be a leader in this area, we can be a leader for clean energy. I am well-prepared to be a leader for you. I am offering my experience representing South Austin. I've lived in South Austin for over twenty years. As a Democratic State legislator, I represented much of District Five. I'm offering my experience in the legal community, the business community, and as in the civic community. I've been assistant attorney general, I've been involved in the community, and I've been advocate for healthcare, for the environment, for seniors, and all throughout, all throughout our community. So I offer my track record of listening to you and fighting for you. You can trust me to listen to you and to fight for you. You can also trust me to be effective and to bring solutions to these tough issues. Thank you very much for having me.
Yes, thank you again for having us tonight. I've enjoyed my career in public service, especially the past four legislative sessions, and getting the opportunity to be a chief of staff, Senator Wendy Davis, which just put me in a, a unique position to work on, on policy matters, including environmental issues, water issues, energy issues, but a host of others that affect what we're going through in the city related to property taxes and transportation, public education. What it gave me the ability to do was work, work on policy at a very high level and work with stakeholders and build coalitions to try to build consensus, to move policy forward in a very thoughtful and deliberate way, without kind of resorting to some major reactions you see sometimes from legislative bodies. And I want, I want to bring that experience to the city. I've seen how municipal governments can stand up when state government fails to, fails to react. I saw them working on payday lending reform with the Capitol over three, three sessions. I was very proud to see Austin stand up and pass ordinance along with other cities, and that's, that's what got me excited about running this race, is looking at the, the opportunity to move policy forward in the city, to make it better for, for all of us, especially in South Austin. Thank you.
All right, thank you all, I hope you all join me in giving a big round of applause.